Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Special Board Meeting Work Session. Today is Monday, December 12th, 2022, and I call tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Suluka, can I have roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. King?
Here.
Mr. Eisen?
Here.
Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Daniels?
Here.
Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Second. And is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Suluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. The first items on our agenda tonight is the presentations, and I turn that over to Dr. Reynolds and Mr. Suluka.
All right, thank you. My first presentation will be on the construction side of the project. We've been meeting regularly with, well, once a month, let's just say, to keep updated on where we are with the project, the timelines, and working through. And it was time to actually come to the board with, I'll say Phase Two, which is a proposed new middle school athletic complex. We've been working through, actually, I have been working through TDA and Show Construction, and we'll, they'll go through it in a minute, have been working through the numbers and keeping updated of where we're at. So I'm going to, so we kind of fine-tuned the project of what we're going to do next summer, and then this is to what we think we want to get on the ballot and go from there. So I've been tweaking every week, getting an up, every month, getting an update. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Smith, Cheryl Fisher, and Scott Clifford from TDA, and then Eric Greider from Show Construction, who has been putting the numbers to the latest, what we're looking at as design and everything else from the two complexes. And we're, we're going to do middle school, and then the athletic complex and a combination of both. But I'm going to leave it up to them to show. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's, my name's Chris Smith with TDA. And while I'm up here talking about it, really Cheryl and Scott and Craig, everybody did, did all the work, so, so thank you. So the project is to construct a brand-new middle school attached to the portion that we're renovating right now. The part that we're renovating right now is about 52,000 square feet. The new construction will be for 900 students in grades six through eight, and would consist of 88,522 square feet of new, new building. It would be designed to support your, your current curriculum, and even with extended learning areas and collaborative spaces and, and such. It would all, have all brand-new furniture, all brand-new technology, all brand-new safety and security measures as well. The, the total square footage of everything would then be 140,522 square feet. If we were going to build, just as a side note, you know, if we're going to build the state's bare minimum size school, that'd be about 126,000 square feet from the state. So this is better. This is, it's, it's specifically sized to accommodate your, your curriculum right now, which we think is, is great. So with that, the, there would be a new stadium in place of the existing stadium. The stadium would consist of hybrid turf, eight-lane all-weather track, stands for 2,000 on the home side, 1,500 on the visitor's side. There would be separate concession buildings with bathrooms and locker rooms. And then we're thinking that little maintenance building over there would probably come down at that point to make room for this stuff. So I can entertain any questions you have.
I don't have any more questions. Is there any questions? Ms. Thomas? Thank you. For the middle school, how many floors would the building be?
Most likely two. It may be three on the academic portion. We just have to kind of get into the site and design it, but probably two or three.
And that would include the elevator?
It would.
I'm, I'm not sure if you one who would know this, but if we're able to move forward, or once we're able to move forward with this project, when is the expected completion date?
Yeah, it's, so it's, it'd be roughly a year to 14 months in design, and then roughly two years in construction. So if we passed in May, it would be '26, fall '26, is that what we said?
For the middle school?
Yes.
Now, the athletic complex would be?
Would be earlier. We could probably have the turf and the track done first. So in stadiums, you always design inside-out, so we start with the turf, then we do the track as they construct it. That would probably be open for fall of '24. It may be some outbuildings to follow.
During this construction, and I guess this question is for Dr. Reynolds, where you guys, will a portion of our building during some of that time still be functionable so that we don't have to displace our students for an extended period of time? Because I know we're keeping one portion of the building intact. So do we have an idea about what we're going to do with the student body, or will we be able to utilize the facilities we currently have for a period of time? And how is that transition going to look?
Yeah, right now, we're not anticipating swing space. So in other words, the kids will stay in the school, the existing school. The new construction would happen, then the kids would move over, and then demolish. So no, no downtime.
And that's consistent with time experience in the past, where they kind of create a space where the new construction begins, the old building, kind of a, a space in between. And then once demolition begins, that's when it's, everything is fine. But there's never been a, well, there have been opportunities where there's been a swing space, but in this situation, there won't be.
One last question with this, for me, one last question. So also with this new middle school, what are we doing with the steel and things on the middle school property?
Well, I think that when we started, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were looking at building to the west, to the south, around the athletic complex somewhere in there. So we would have to displace the softball and baseball fields. And the idea is probably maybe doing something when we demolish is moving those fields up to the front where the maple leaf, all those fields are, maybe put something in there. And having that as our, our fields, or even looking somewhere else. But I think the idea was to build on those fields for the new middle school and have it overlook, kind of overlook the valley a little bit and go from there. That way, we don't incur the cost of swing space, and we can still educate as we're building. And that's, that saves us a lot of money.
And we also give you more space between maple leaf and the new middle school, between, with the athletic fields in between.
Especially for the parking and the dismissal and entry times.
All of the new construction would take place on property that we already own as a district?
Yes.
Having a new state-of-the-art building within our city, just even wondering when the last time our city had a, you know, new construction. I know we've been beautifying, beautifying city view and redeveloping it. Having this state-of-the-art building, would it be an asset to the city as a whole? Just even those who, you know, would it add value to our community, the surrounding homes, and things of that sort, having a new state-of-the-art construction within our city?
Yeah, almost certainly. If history is any lesson, then you can look at some neighboring cities that have built new schools, and it's all property values rise.
Thank you.
Just to the side, and I want to say this just because I live there in Brock, New York, what I'm hearing is that due to their building of the new elementary that combines all their old elementaries, they're now outgrowing the space because they had a lot of families who liked that concept actually move into the district. And all of a sudden, they're kind of pushing, pushing a little bit. That's what I'm, you know, I'm hearing. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but it's just like, I think new facilities do attract families.
We're putting in 300 additional lockers right now in Brexville. I mean, more than what we planned.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Well, thank you, Chris. We appreciate your time and the work that you guys have been doing thus far to support this project for the student center.
Thanks. It's our pleasure. Thank you.
So next up, I think we're going to hear from Eric a little bit, because you put the cost to this exactly a little bit, right? From the design phase?
Yeah, we're working with TDA and developing some of the costs associated with that. And I can't speak exactly to some of the costs. I think, Chris, you probably have some better data on that. But I do have some unupdate on related to the middle school and high school upgrades. We've been fine-tuning the costs on that over the past couple of months. And we recently closed on the, fine-tuned the dollar amount for that, which came in just about, about $5 million for the costs related to those renovations. So in terms of cost for the new?
Sure. Construction. So the new construction total for the stadium and the middle schools estimated $55 million right now.
And I think that, you know, in following up as we're trying to get, the hardest part of putting a cost to this is it seems like every time we meet with, with these gentlemen, the cost goes up, and it's kind of like, kind of scares me a little bit because the cost keeps going up, and it's really supposed to go the other way. But unfortunately, with today's, and the, they're using today's dollars, and cost of materials is going up, the, the cost of supply chain is going up, inflation is going up. It's just like, so they're, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve to make sure, and I think that you'll hear this in the presentation of the money, is that we want to make sure that we build it right, and we are not shortchanging ourselves and push comes to shove. And I think that that's kind of the issue now. That's going to say when actual construction starts. We don't know up or down, but we want to make sure that when we put a cost to something that we are conservative a little bit on the high end.
I, I agree 100%. As you know, construction price has been very volatile over the past couple of years. And, but I feel very comfortable with this budget, that you're going to get an awesome middle school and athletic project. So in, in other words, the, when we did Brexville, just because we were talking about that one earlier, we, this one's probably 120% more than that one was per square foot, and rightfully so. So I, I do feel it's a conservative number. You're not going to overpay either. That's the beauty about a construction manager at risk. They're going to issue a guaranteed maximum price as we get further into design and the drawings, and that'll protect the district.
Can you break out that 55 between the athletic and the middle school for the board real quick?
Sure. So approximately $45 million for the middle school and $10 million for the stadium athletic complex.
So this group has put the numbers out there and given their best guess of what that price is, and they've also built in like, when we start building, you know, an increase factor because we won't be starting the building, so prices go up and down. So what we asked the finance team to do is to, okay, we're going to go out for a combination bond, cops issue, and I'll let the finance team talk about the differences of why we need to go where we go. And, and, and Stiefel is here, Sessina Associates are here, and then we can, we can talk about that. And then Rick was going for, and this is the, the finance piece, it's the debt limitation of why we need to do both. And he can address that after we do the financing of why we need to do a combination bond, cops, and why we can't do a full bond issue, and why we need to go there. So from the legality standpoint. So I'm going to turn this over to the Stiefel team of, of Michelle and Bill and?
Dan.
Dan. I knew it. I just didn't want to miss that, miss that. Dan. And then I'll add Mike Sessina from Sessina Associates. I'm going to give you these to pass out.
Oh.
And then we can go from there. Or I could, I could have done that, too.
Okay. I'm Michelle Hillstrom. I work at Stiefel Nicholas. We're the Garfield Heights Board of Education's underwriter, once this issue passes in May hopefully. Thanks for having us here. We all worked together, David Riley and Rick Maniloff and Mike Sessina, to come up with this, this financing plan. So I think part of the, talking about why we have a bond issue and a PI, it's actually a permanent improvement levy that's going to go on the ballot as well as bond issue. And really, the simple reason is we, we have certain debt limits in Ohio, and we can only issue $19,500 under those debt limits as a voted bond issue. It'd be nice if we could do the whole 55 million as a voted bond issue, but by state law, as, or whatever, is it bond law or state law? That's his thing. We can only do 19.5. So how do we generate enough revenues to pay back the rest of it? We're talking about 55 million. So we would suggest putting a permanent improvement levy on. And then we issue what we call certificates of participation, which is kind of like a lease, and we don't have to get in the weeds on that. What we, that's just another financing way to generate money without, with avoiding your debt limits. And it's done all over the state of Ohio. The debt limits for the state are pretty, I mean, they're not so stringent, but they can get, when you have a small assessed valuation, like the school district does, it kind of limits us. Anyway, so about 19 million, oh, exactly 19,500, we'll put on the ballot. That's really easy to figure out the millage is because it's, the auditor, we take 19.5 million. Rick tells us how long we can go out with the bond issue, which is, which is 37 years. We supply, Stiefel will supply the interest rate, which we're using 5% right now. And then use your assessed valuation, the new assessed valuation, which is good. It went up a little bit, which is nice. And that ballot millage is 2.63. And that's that last column, the first up to the right there. Permanent improvement levy, we actually have to, you can only go out 30 years with these leases. So instead of 37, we'll go out 37 years with the bond issue. You can only go out 30 years with the lease. So we actually have to pretend to do a 35 million, $35.5 million bond issue in current rates. And then we take the highest debt service on that, and then we decide how much permanent improvement levy we're going to need. And that is 8.6 mils for a total of 11.23 mils. The good news is, if you go, that's the first, that's the first box. So combined levy on the ballot, so you'll have a 2.63 bond issue, and you'll have an 8.6 PI levy on the ballot for 11.253. We have 9.5 mils rolling off in 2026, which is awesome. Because that means we can, the way we're going to market this is that, hey, it is 11.23 mils, which sounds like a lot, but you're already paying, Miss voter taxpayer, 9.5 mils. So it's really only 1.73 mils of new millage. So that makes, I mean, you're going to get a $55 million beautiful middle, middle school and athletic field for 1.73 mils, really. And then I just, at the end here, the, the third box is just showing kind of cost per homeowner, which might be more, I don't know, tech voters might kind of relate to it better. So it would cost $393.50 per $100,000 of assessed value in Garfield Heights. That seems like a lot, right? But currently, they're already paying $332.50 for the 9.5 mils. All we're doing is asking them to keep that 9.5 going past 2026, plus add 1.73 mils. And so that's really only $60.55 more that they're going to be paying for this. So, you know, it's not a renewal, you don't, you know, you can't really call it a renewal on the 9.5. It's more of a marketing sort of thing. It's the message that we're going to have to get out to taxpayers. There's a, there's a couple of notes at the bottom. You know, we have to make a lot of assumptions. We don't know what interest, we're probably not, if, if the bond issue passes, or the PI levy and the bond issue pass in May, we won't get into the market until June or July of 2023. So we're making a lot of assumptions on what interest rates will be like. So those are with those notes down there. It was good to get your 2023 assessed valuation before we did all this, because now we, that's set. But I think we've been really conservative. We've only assumed that you're going to get assessed valuation growth every three years. If you get more, that's great. With the bond issue, the millage goes down with assessed valuation growth for the taxpayer. So, and then we assumed you wouldn't collect like 100% of those property taxes. We, we said 94%. So that just gives us, if we collect more, that's great. It's as less millage we'll have to apply to the taxpayers. But to be conservative, I think it's, I think it's good. So I don't know if you had any questions or?
Actually, it's 92%.
Oh, 92%, right. 94, oh, 94 has been your average for the last. So yes, we went even below that, just to be on the safe side.
And just to piggyback what Michelle's saying is that we, there's revaluation every three years. The last revaluation was, I think, 20%, 18 to 20% for residential. But I, in the forecast going forward, it's only been at every three years at a 2% increase to be really conservative. So I don't think we're going to see those double digits. Valuations are going to climb, I think, more as housing values go up. We wanted to be, in, in the financing, and this is a discussion that we had, a long discussion that we had, is we, once again, we want to make sure the financing plan is very conservative, especially with collection rates and assessed valuation, to ensure that if we're telling the voters that, okay, we need to increase what you're paying now of 1.73 mils at $60 a year on top of what you're already paying, and please continue that, that's $5 a month. We don't want to have to come back and say, oh, by the way, you've got a big tax bill. That's because we underestimated, and we didn't want to do that. If we're ultra-conservative and it comes in higher, that's even better. That just lowers taxes. Well, I can't really say that because your housing values will go up, but your investment, but then it's spread out more towards everybody else. So that's just one of the ways that we finance this. But really, we're ultra-conservative in, in doing this, in certifying this to the county fiscal officer. So we think it's a good plan, gives it a no new tax. Unfortunately, it's not. But as you heard, the pricing is going up, and, but it's a very minimal increase. I actually thought it was going to be higher, and it's, and it's not, which is a, a good thing. Because I was afraid with the cost of goods going up, with the supply chain issue, inflation going up, borrowing costs are going up, that it would be higher. And I think this is a good financing plan to get the building that the community deserves, and the athletic complex that the community deserves, and not to shortchange it.
Ms. King, ma'am, chair, two questions. First, the, I know previously we had talked about the rolling off, and we'd be able to just continue without an increase. What happened with, why aren't we able to go that route?
Well, interest rates have, oh, if you like.
No, go ahead.
Interest rates a lot, a lot. So interest rates have gone up, and so did the project amount went up significantly. That's really, it's just cost since January, I don't know, inflation's what, 8%? It's just that. And, and interest rates, when we started out in January 2022, were 150 basis points lower than they are now. 1.5% lower than they were now. That's just it.
So what we did, and the group has put together a financing package with a no new millage interest increase. But what it did is if, if we need 55 million for the project to be the right-sized project, what would a no new millage get as far as the project? And right now, it only generate, now, I forgot, I'm passing this around. Right now, that project would only generate $42.8 million. So we would have to cut out roughly 12.2 million out of the project, out of either the middle school or the athletic complex, based on today's numbers.
And my other question is, if this were to pass in May, when would the taxpayers begin to see that $60.55?
January of 2024.
Okay. And we would be able to then have part of the athletic space, the turf?
Yep.
Done in '24, and then school in '26? I'm, you know, in my head, I'm just, I'm, I want to be able, if, if our taxpayers are paying for something, I want to be able to, them to be able to see the fruits of their $60.55.
And actually, we've designed it that they won't see anything until 2027, because we're going to wait till the 2026 falls off. So they won't really see any increase in their taxes until 2020. We could levy it as early as January 2024, but we're going to wait and not levy any, very little, until 2027. So they're going to see everything before they're actually paying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, and I'll, I'll let Mike jump in, too. Mike and Michelle have been working together on putting a, what do you, an amortization schedule to help start that later on when this other millage falls off, and then just keep it going. Am I oversimplifying it?
No, that's exactly right. Yeah, we're just able to, with financing techniques, able to set up the debt service schedule so we don't have to, we can issue the debt, borrow the money, get it in the, in the bank so they can start paying for construction. But defer the repayment of it for about two years until that, that millage all lines up. And so by, we do that through, again, through financing techniques. Basically, borrow the interest to pay the debt service, but it doesn't impact the duplicate, the tax duplicate, the tax bill to the taxpayer until, until later, basically, until the construction is up and complete.
And that's when we, you see the tax budget come up in January. That's where we say the debt, and that's when the county fiscal officer assesses the millage. So if we don't have that debt coming until '26, then we won't show that and have them assess that until that debt starts coming to fruition in '26. By that time, we should see something coming out of the ground, the athletic complex at least, too. So I think that that's kind of a good thing. And I know we've been pushing TDA on the athletic complex, only knowing that our field conditions and all the other things that are coming, and that we, you know, if this thing passes in, well, that was just me. If it passes in May, we start bulldozing in. But you're right. We start bulldozing in May to set the schedule, and that's, I'm going to be wrong. We'll be back in May, and we'll have a fine schedule of what we're, how we're going to do this, because everybody will be ready to go. That's what we've been, and we still can, we'll be meeting monthly to make sure we stay on schedule. Okay, the lineup, five bulldozers, and everybody takes a truck. Yeah, okay.
My last question, because I know there's do's and don'ts. Will this be a message that we will be able to share as a part of our communications with our taxpayers that they won't see this until '26, '27?
I think that's a, I'm going to say, and Dr. Reynolds could jump in. I think that is a part of the game plan for messaging out if this is issued or made valid, and getting it out to the community and the public.
It's going to be very important in this process that our taxpayers understand exactly what they're getting and the fact that it won't hit their bill until '27. When we were having a discussion on exactly the direction we need to go, it was very important that we had that dollar amount that our taxpayers would be interested in. So that's why we, we wanted to make sure that we had the numbers that, that was in the, that's in the. So that's why we, we wanted to make sure that we had the numbers that, that was in the, that's in the presentation, very clear on what that will be. Because we have to be as transparent as possible because we want them to, to understand that this is a, a situation or how we move in as a district, is that transparency is key to, to us and our relationship with the community. So this is definitely going to be a sell-in for us to just let them know exactly what they're getting and exactly what that cost will be to the community. So yes, it will be a part of it.
Thank you. When was the last time we asked our community and neighbors for additional funds and what was it for?
It was two thousand twelve and it was for an emergency levy of four, four point one million. So it's been ten years and it was operating, not for anything to ask bricks and mortar. Which bricks and mortar, you're seeing what you're getting and that, you know. That's the last time they passed something. Now, don't get me wrong, we've been on for two, two issues for a new athletic complex and they both failed.
And Mr. Sluka, refresh my recollection, was it two mills for the athletic complex at that time?
Yes, it was.
So back then, you asked two mill, two new mills to get an athletic complex. Now you're asking for less than that to get the middle school and the athletic complex.
Thank you. Because I mean, as we're having this discussion, we're just not talking about our neighbors. These are deals that we acquired too because we are investors in this project too. And, you know, we, I, well, I'm not going to say we, but I could just speak for myself. So I understand the necessity to invest in improvement on my community, but how much me and my neighbors can afford to. So I do appreciate you guys coming up with something that seems affordable and wouldn't necessarily cause a huge impact because in this community, we, we need to invest in some improvements in our city overall, but our capacity to afford it, it seems like just we did, you guys come up with a plan to make it affordable for us. You know, so when we talk about community, neighbors, voters, that is us too. So we're looking at it in that, I'm looking at it in that lens.
Yeah, all those mills rolling off is a unique opportunity, you know, for sure.
And I think one, one more thing that I think that we need to get out to this, to the community is that we were able to improve the three elementary schools and it did not cost the community one additional property tax. We were able to do it with the money that we got from the state. So that was a, a savings and now we're stepping up and just saying, hey, just, you know, a little bit then we can address the last two pieces of our facility that really need addressing. If you look at those in nineteen thirties for the athletic complex and nineteen sixty-two for the middle school, which was actually an old high school. And it's not, you know, and I, I applaud that we moved to use old high schools, it was the latest building, but it's not a middle school. In, in terms of academic and programming, it's not a middle school.
Well, beyond academic and programming, we also looking at the conditions of that building. It's not the best conditions that we want our students to learn in. And even have our staff working. I mean, it's just, there's some condition issues beyond. It's just, it should, it's, it's, it does not look like Garfield High City School District. When we talk about high school, our elementary schools, it's not, our middle school students are not having an opportunity to work in affordable spaces like the rest of the district, which is a, a huge thing for us to consider.
And if our expectations are for us to improve as a district, we need to make sure that we're investing in our children. And if we're investing in our children, let's make sure that we are wholeheartedly going into this to not try to, to, because there are opportunities for us to kind of cut corners and we can, we can do that. But, but if we're talking about making sure our children have what they need, when we're trying to push them to more collaborative spaces, more flexible spaces, which is basically where, the direction where education is going, we, we need to make sure that we're investing as much as we possibly can. And this is an opportunity for us to, to really do right about children.
On the athletic complex, again, I know that we've been talking about as a city and the some of the master plan, just some plans to do some renovation going up that, the boulevard, which is where our high school sits in that area and community. But having that athletic complex, a state of our athletic complex in our community, will there be opportunities for community usage of our facilities? Yeah, so will, will, you know, if you don't have children in high school, children in the school district, are there opportunities for those that are investing in some of these complexes to enjoy it outside? You know, will the track be walkable for the community and things like that? Or have we considered that? Or is that normal for some schools and things of that sort?
That's definitely something that we consider, kind of the ins and outs of how we manage those things. I think that is where we're going to partner with, possibly partner with the city, you know, for partnership there. But we want it to be a community effort. And to do that, we have to figure out ways how to share that space with the community and invite the community in. If we're talking about even Saturday sporting events for, for some of our youth, we, that is definitely an area that we want to pursue and understanding how we can make that work.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Because then we have, I wanted to invite Mr. Maniloff up because I think the next step in the process is to get this on the ballot and the procedures for doing that and what we need to do and the timelines for getting it on the May ballot and, and the language and talk about the new, okay, the new House bill that the legislature passed on ballot language.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka. So I'm Rick Maniloff, Squire, Patton Boggs Bond Counsel to the district. Actually did the, the forty-one and a half million dollar bond issue back in two thousand and then the, and then the follow-up bond issue in two thousand two. So I've been with the district for a long time on bond issue matters. On this particular one, as has been mentioned, we had this, we're going to have to split up the fifty-five million into two pieces parts. The, the bond issue piece, as Michelle described, is, is constrained by the, the debt limitations and then the rest is going to be a permanent improvement levy and that, and we're going to leverage that revenue stream into at least purchase-based financing called the COPS issue. And I just wanted to reiterate that to mention that Dr. Reynolds worked on a similar matter, as did I, with Orangeville Heights, City School District, similarly constrained with the, with the size of the bond issue. I think it was forty-eight and a half million. And then we had to supplement that with a significant permanent improvement levy, just like we're doing now. So Dr. Reynolds has a direct experience with, with this kind of thing. As far as timeframe goes, should the board decide to move forward with this, with this project, with this plan of finance and take this to the voters in May, then we are prepared to, to hit the ground running. I already have a draft of the resolution that the Board of Education would consider at its meeting on December nineteenth, which would be the first of the two necessary resolutions to put the, the bond issue and permanent improvement levy on the May ballot. After the board would approve the December nineteenth resolution, then we would file a bunch of paperwork with the state government before January two. That's our first deadline. I would work with the superintendent and treasurer to make sure that that happened. Then, after that, and before January twenty-fourth, the Board of Education would adopt the second resolution, Resolution Number Two. And, and that, that would just basically be a resolution to proceed to the ballot. In between the first two resolutions, the one on the nineteenth and the one sometime in January, before January twenty-fourth, the county government would certify certain numbers to the Board of Education. So after the December nineteenth meeting, Al will, will certify the resolution over to Brian Don at the county government. And, and it's, it's our understanding that, and this, I guess, segues into, into this. This is a, this is what the ballot is going to look like. I used to be a board member, I served out a, a term, an unexpired term for two and a half years. So I know that you guys are concerned about what's the ballot going to look like. And this is what the ballot is, is going to look like, more or less. There, I say more or less because as has been mentioned by Al, there's a new law that's been passed, House Bill one forty, which has really changed the game in a lot of respects with respect to the, the ballot. And, and so this is, this is pretty much what it's going to look like. Now, there's a blank to be filled in by the county government, but as you can see, the first part of the, well, one point to raise is, to reiterate, is that this ballot question is a single question. The voters are not voting thumbs up or thumbs down on each part separately, the, the bond issue and the PI piece. It's one single question, yes or no. First part is the bond issue part, that's the nineteen and a half million, over thirty-seven years and, and two point six three mils, as Michelle mentioned, is the, is the millage that that works out to at a five percent interest rate. And that we estimate is going to be about ninety-two dollars for each one hundred thousand dollars of the county auditor's appraised value. So that's piece number one. Piece number two is the, is the PI levy and, and that's just a continuing period of time, permanent improvement levy. And that equates to about three hundred and one. So on Michelle's sheet, I think she saw three hundred and ninety-three dollars for one hundred thousand dollar home. That's how it's broken up between the two pieces. Ninety-two dollars for the bond issue and three hundred and one for the PI levy, all one piece, all one thumbs up or thumbs down question. The first resolution that, that I've drafted contains basically four elements in it you are going to sign off on if you choose to move forward with this. A, the principal amount of the, of the bond issue and the, and the tax levy amount. B, the purpose clause of the bond issue, which you can see drafted there. Issue bonds for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, equipping, renovating. So that you'll be approving that purpose clause. Third, you will be approving the maximum maturity of the, of the bond issue, which stems from a legal statutory calculation based upon information from the architect, which kind of ties in with the weighted average useful life. How long is this project going to last? Because we don't want people paying for something for a hundred years and it's only going to last twenty-five years. So those things match up under state law. And so thirty-seven years is how it all turns out. So we, and you will, you will approve that number at, during Resolution Number One, as part of Resolution Number One. And the last thing is the estimated interest rate. That does not come from the county government. That doesn't come after the fact. The five percent which Michelle mentioned comes from you guys, based upon advice from your, your finance professionals. But those are the, those are the elements of Resolution Number One, which then, as I mentioned, goes to the county. And then you, with respect to Resolution Number Two, you're not, you're not saying anything new. You're just saying, yeah, we got the county certifications, let's go. That's what Resolution Number Two is all about. And then we file everything by January twenty-four. That's ninety-eight days before the May two election. And we file things with the state government by that deadline. It's a ninety-eight day deadline. And then we, then Al has to file all the paperwork for the county board of elections by February one, which is ninety days before the election. So I'll recover some of those legal issues and procedural issues and ballot language. Does anyone have any questions about any of the legal stuff?
I have a question. It's not necessarily law or legal. Just going back to the thirty-seven years.
Yes.
Does it typically take thirty-seven years to pay back? Because I know one's thirty-seven, one's thirty-five, I believe. Does it typically take, or thirty years? Does it typically take that long? I, I know that's the maximum, but what have you seen?
In direct answer to your question, I would say it is most typical that a thirty-seven-year bond, I haven't, I've been in the business twenty-eight years, so I haven't seen a thirty-seven-year bond issue go all the way out. But typically, a bond issue, once the debt service schedule gets set, will go out for the full length. If we were to compress it, kind of like going from a thirty-year mortgage to a fifteen-year mortgage, you can do it, your interest rate may or may not get better. Typically would get better if you compressed it and, but what happens is your monthly payment goes up a lot. So as it equates to this situation, if you were to compress it from like a thirty-seven years, which is the max, if you were to compress it to like thirty years or something like that, do it. You might get an interest rate benefit from that. However, the annual amount that's going to be collected to pay that debt service is going to increase materially. And so, you know, all of Michelle's projections about how much it's going to cost extra, you know, starting in two thousand twenty-seven, those are, those will be off. It would be higher than that if we were to compress the maximum maturity. Now that said, there are districts out there, Michelle and I work with Michelle Mills in Beachwood and the treasurer in Beachwood, and Beachwood has taken up bond issue. And every time we refinance that, like you would refinance a mortgage, Beachwood likes to shave a couple of years off. And then the next time we refinance, we shave a couple more years off. So it has been done. I would not say that that is typical, but, but those are the, the issues, the considerations. Can be done, but there's an impact.
Yeah, I, the reason why I was asking is because this will be something that residents will be taking into consideration, will be paying this amount for at least thirty-seven years. So that, that was my, my reason for asking.
If I may supplement what I just said by saying, there, there are several districts that I can think of off the top of my head now that have paid off bonds early. So they, they will have collected, you know, a certain amount over time and then, you know, by the, by the, by the end, when it gets, starts to get close to the end, wind up with enough money to just pay it all off. I've seen that in Poland schools on the eastern side of the state, northwestern schools, Kent field schools. So these are all school districts that have just paid things off early because they had the cash on hands to do it. And soon you pay it off and you don't have to pay interest on it. In principle, I mean, we save the taxpayers money if you got it.
Also, I just want to mention, if these will be, if rates do come down, like in five years or so, we'll be able to refinance these bonds at a lower interest rate. So maybe at that time, you might be able to shave off a year or two, but definitely your annual payment will depend.
Because when the, yeah, the interest rates go down, now all of a sudden you have to, you know, pay, pay less per year. So maybe you can push up the maximum maturity and bring it back to where it was before. So you're paying the same amount, but you're paying less, less of an interest, a shorter maturity. That's what we did in Beachwood.
And we have the previous bond issue in two thousand and two and two thousand and four. We've refinanced both of those over the period since I've been here three times, to lower interest rates and save the taxpayers money.
Correct. Good question.
Is there any more questions? Or some other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just to follow up and just what I'd noticed, how we came up with the concept, working on the design, trying to stay ahead of the curve and then having the finance team being able to put these numbers and, and tweak these as we go on a monthly basis. I just wanted to say thank you to them and their due diligence and being able to present tonight and present, we think, as a viable plan in moving forward and addressing the middle school and the athletic complex. And we don't stop here. If things get better, then we will look at that and go from there. And, but as far as like, I think covering all the contingencies and making sure that the plan covers exactly what we want and we're not shortchanging anything. And we want to get it out to the community and give them the right story and the, the right issues is that we don't want to ever have to come back and say, mea culpa, we missed it. And with this team, they don't miss it. They, they hit it right on the head and having the support of the financing team, the TDA and Chuck, who is doing the estimates and, you know, and was a and, and Chuck, who, um, is doing the estimates and, you know, and was a, a good thing that the estimates are lower for what that we're doing next summer already. It's a good thing, but we wanted to make sure that we had that all in place. And, and Mike and, and looking over the numbers after and, and being able to have different eyes on this. And we think we have a, a good plan in place, and I just wanna say thank you to all of you.
Thank you, guys. When will the, um, board and the community have an opportunity to see the plans? Are, are guys still in the works?
I think, no, I think we're still in the works, but I, I think that we need to have something ready to go. If we're gonna ask them for money, we should have something to show them.
Yeah.
Right, so. So there, okay, there's your.
Some money, then ask my neighbors for money. I wanna know what we're, I'd like to know what, what, what I'm, you know.
What, what you're voting for, absolutely. So I think that we, you know, we talked about concepts and stuff and, you know, the athletic, and they've been doing a lot of athletic complexes. So I mean, there's one thing I think we can go for, and now we just put the, put the pressure on Scott here to start doing concepts.
If, if I may, the, the challenge always is the architects don't necessarily wanna rush out and say, this is what your building's gonna look like, without engaging with the community on what's important to them. Is it a traditional style? Is it something more contemporary? Do they want columns in the front of the building? Do they want a glass building? Those are all the things that they can give you kind of preliminary, but it's important to emphasize there's gonna be time for members of the community to provide feedback and input on what that building will look like, cause it's their school. It's the community's school. It's not, it's not Chris's building. You know, Chris is designing and trying to get the best value for the community, but it needs to reflect what the community finds important. Um, and so they can give you kind of a, hey, here's an idea of what it might look like, but we're gonna be coming to you and getting all stakeholders to provide input on that design.
Okay, did we do that with the, um, high school? Do we have stakeholder?
I thought that they had a, a committee that they put together with stakeholders and businesses and everything else, but I, I don't know if they were part of the design or just part of the.
We did.
Okay, so yeah, you, uh.
There was a business advisory group that was fairly small. Um, and the high school, the high school was a bit challenging on construction because as that building started, the district also entered into something called the Expedited Local Partnership Program of the Ohio Facilities School Count, uh, OFSC at the time, I'm messing up their acronym, they've changed to the OFCC. Um, and, and not everything went well with that transition in the middle. And eventually Mr. Sluka and I went down to Columbus, probably fifteen years ago, to get more money for the district to fix some things. Um, but yes, you know, the idea is you go to the stakeholders. We like to say everybody gets their say, but not everybody gets their way. Cause you, not everybody can get their way, but everybody's gonna be heard. And sometimes you say, that's a great idea, and usually you wanna limit the community, not limit. You want the community to apply more on exterior items, and your educators and your administrative team talking more about what the interior, where education is going to happen. Uh, we want that to be by educators who know what the kids need, needs, I should say.
So do that process happen after it's approved or before? Like, you know, what do we, I recall like years ago, when we were asked about the athletic complex, I think there were some things that went out that had, you know, uh, what it would look like.
I think the athletic complex is a little easier than a, a, a school building. I, I, you know, I'm not gonna throw it, cause I think it's from, from Dr. Reynolds standpoint, but I think you could say, okay, the middle school's gonna have this type of programming and that type of program, and we could really definitely say it's gonna have air conditioning and the windows, okay? And, and that sort of thing, we could say that. And, but yeah, as far as from the educational program, I think it's, it's a, a concept thing.
Yeah, they can generate an image, but I guess my caution to the board is I, I wanna emphasize this is an idea of what it might look like. Nothing's been designed, we're gonna come and engage with the community on ultimately what it would look like, and everyone's gonna have input. Uh, input not necessarily their way, but everybody will have a chance to attend meetings, and that normally happens after the issue passes. Now, the challenge you're gonna face with the May ballot is, you know, it'll pass early in May, and a lot of your stakeholders generally disappear during the summer. You lose all your teachers and students. Uh, so usually with, with these folks, they'll start working on some things, but you really kick off your engagement probably in September. Again, everyone back to school in August, and then in September, you start having your parents and your teachers and your community members start identifying what, what's important to them in a building. You know, is it to have a media center? Do you wanna disaggregate that media center into pods in, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? How you wanna do those things? And what does the exterior look like? Do we wanna have a media center so that the community can hold meetings in that facility? Those are all things that they need to get information on, so they know what you want.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Any other questions? Well, I'd like to again thank everybody for their time and updating the board on where we're at with this project. Um, I thank you guys for, um, leading the district in this, and I'm just looking forward to partnering with our community and stakeholders to ensure that our students have the adequate facilities to learn. So thank you, guys. Our next item on our agenda this evening is our tentative agenda review. Mr. Sluka has provided for Board of Education, copies of our Monday, December nineteenth, twenty-twenty, regular board meeting agenda. And at this time, um, I would ask Dr. Reynolds and Mr. Sluka, if there's anything that you would like to highlight, um, to the Board of Education to look forward to on this agenda.
Yes, thank you. Um, we, we'll be going over the academic achievement plan, uh, after, um, working within the district, with the teachers, with the students, all stakeholders. Uh, we have a direction that we'd like to push for the remainder of the school year and into the next, into next year, on ways of, of improving our instructional practices. Uh, so that'd be an opportunity for us to, um, to really, uh, engage the board in the direction that we're, we're planning on going. Um, also, uh, Ms. Bailey will also be doing a presentation as well, uh, on that evening. Uh, but there are a few contracts that we'll be engaging in, uh, that you may have, have some questions. Uh, as you know, there, there are a lot of, uh, organizations that we are engaging, uh, to, to make sure that we are responding to suit needs. Uh, and one of which is, uh, hard to hard, that is actually not for us. That is actually for another school district that we're actually, uh, responsible for in regards to the fiscal, uh, being their fiscal agent. But there is, um, what we're doing with Stop Bullying and Leadership Program, uh, that is something that we felt that we really need to, to bring to the forefront. Um, there have been, uh, as in any school district, there have been, uh, situations where we need to really address, um, allegations of bullying. And one of those, um, kind of responses to that is to not, is to educate our students on, on what we should be doing, our, our response to, to any type of situations. There's also Patricia Swoop, uh, which, who will be, uh, responsible for our affinity group. Um, there are a couple of things when we're talking about just retaining teachers. Um, one, we're currently doing our, uh, new teacher boot camp for our new teachers. And what this affinity group is, is for our minority teachers to create a safe space for our minority teachers to really kind of discuss situations or responses or supports for them as well. Um, and that is pretty much the, the areas that, that we really wanted to kind of highlight. Are there any other areas?
Actually, I, I do have two areas, and we could discuss those now. We need to, um, set the date and time for the organizational meeting and for the tax budget, which we kind of do at the, piggyback at the end of the organizational meeting. Now, that has to be done, um, within the first, uh, fifteen days, the organizational meeting. And I'm not sure, I think in the past, and what we need to do is, and, and I'm just throwing out a suggestion, is that we could do, um, a combination, that we could do an organizational meeting, and then we get that done, and then we could do the work session on the same time. If we wanna start to do the organizational meeting like at five that night, get that done, and then do the, um, and then just go right into, and do the work session as the next meeting, and hold the tax budget at the same time at the end of the organizational. Or we could do it a separate day, it's up to, up to the board. You could do it two separate nights, or we can, cause we do have a work session, I think planned for January ninth. But that's just a, a suggestion, that that would be within the fifteen days.
Question?
Yes.
During the work session, after the organizational meeting, prior to a setting the meeting days, do that give us ample, ample notice? Or can we do a work session without the, can we set a work session for twenty-twenty-three prior to the organizational meeting and give proper notice? That's my question.
Well, what ends up happening is that, um, we don't really, i- in the organizational meeting, we don't really set our work sessions because we can move them and adjust them. So we don't put them at standing meeting, we just, so what I would do is I would send out a special meeting notice for the organizational meeting, and then I would send out a, a special meeting notice for the work session like I've been doing. So we can do that, and, and I would have two notices, a special meeting. First, a notice of the organizational meeting, which we would hold that meeting, and then close it down, and then we would open the, the work session as a separate meeting, and I would do two notices. And that gets us, in the timeline, it would get us to, um, the requirements of the Sunshine Laws and give a proper notification.
Cause I guess special board meetings before you have your organizational meeting, we could have an emergency.
You could have an emergency special meeting at any time at call before the organizational meeting. Especially because I don't think that there was, um, one which is, there's no election, so it's not like you have the swearing in, cause board members, if it was an election year, their term ends December thirty-first, so you really couldn't have a, a, a special meeting. Well, you could have the, but you can only have it with the three board members in the organizational meetings where you swear in the new board members. So, but then again, if you needed to hold a special meeting before that, you could have redone the organizational meeting out before that and that. But I don't think that, that, if anything comes up that we need to do that. But that's, that's just a, a suggestion.
Is it okay for everyone in that, doing it that way? In the evening?
Well, I would, I was thinking like maybe five-thirty for the organizational meeting, and then maybe six-fifteen for the special meeting, does that work?
Is that the first day, that's a school, is the first day back to our stackers?
Thanks, we'll come back.
No, I'm sorry, college level. I come back to work on, um, the, um, third. Yeah, me too, but we, our first day of class is Monday, so I just don't know that for midday. Or I can't, midday, I don't wanna commit to midday so much for me, I need it.
I was thinking, you know, like around five-fifteen to start the organizational, five-thirty, and then the, the regular work session at six-fifteen that day. It's just, it's up to everybody.
Can we just keep it at our normal six? I mean, it shouldn't be too much.
Six and then six-thirty for the work session? We can do that too, absolutely. It's whatever the board wants, it's just how I get the meeting notices out.
Is that okay for everyone?
Okay, and then what I'll do is I'll put on the agenda for approval, the six o'clock on the ninth, for, and then the tax budget at the same time, like right after that.
Cause organizational meeting doesn't take long.
Usually they, it takes about a half hour getting through and approving everything. Okay, that's all kinda hit. And then you will see, I'm just gonna, you'll see the resolution to get this on the ballot, um, at the meeting for the Board of Vote that Mr. Vandaloff was talking about. He's gonna send that to me, and I'll make sure it's on the agenda.
Madam President, I have one question. Ms. E, um, the Stop the Bully, Bullying and Leadership Program, what age group is that?
This is middle school.
Do we have this program, or what are we doing for this in our elementary school? Cause some of that culture is starting in our fourth and fifth, the third, and so some of that culture of bullying and violating boundaries is starting. Uh, so we're seeing the result in the middle school, but it's not rooting in the middle school.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're finding out as well. Um, so right now, the, the response has been, because the incidents have been happening at middle school, so this is the response to what we've seen. But we have to dig deeper to really get to the core of where this thing's happening. And I believe that it is happening at elementary schools as well. So we'll be planning to, to respond to that, to, to catch it, like we said in the country, nippin' the bud, to, to really catch it at the core of where these things are happening. So that's, that's a conversation that's been happening not only with our people services, but also with our, uh, DEI department as well. So this is where this is coming from. So we'll, we'll be in, in conversation about digging with.
Yeah, cause our fifth graders just don't, you know, start making poor choices the summer before sixth grade.
Yeah. I agree.
So if we could start, um, you know, um, I know we're seeing more of the end result at the middle school, but that culture is starting prior to when they're coming into the middle school, lacking the skills to be good peers and productive participates in this positive school culture. Um, so, um, yeah, I know fourth and fifth grade is, from just parental standpoint, is where it started.
Yep. So we'll definitely be responding to that.
By the time it got to middle school, woo, then that's where we have a hard time getting under control. It's just kind of where I'm looking at from a parental standpoint, like start seeing it growing in fourth grade, fire start going in fifth grade, and then by the time they're over in sixth grade, there's a bunch of different kids, and then we can't get it under control. Cause that's not where it's starting at. Any other things on today's agenda that you would like to highlight for the board?
I think, um, there is another organization that we will be working with, Change of Direction, it's a mentor program. Um, as I told you before, um, we are creating measures to ensure that the, uh, organizations we're partnering with, that we're measuring the impact of their, of their work in our building, to, to see if we're gonna continue to work in those, in the same capacity, uh, next year. So that is why you'll see a variety of different things, cause you have a variety of students who may respond differently to, to different organizations or different individuals. So this is yet another one. This one is actually hitting four buildings, uh, about seventy students. Uh, so this, we're hoping this will have a, a great impact on what we're trying to, to do with our children. Uh, so, but we, we will be measuring the impact of each one of these organizations.
Is there opportunity, um, for the board to, um, board members to just kind of visit some of these? Are, are these programs happening after school or some?
Some are after school, some are during the day, where we're doing some pull-off sessions as well. But what I'd like to do is to, to bring a few of the organizations somewhere, uh, maybe February, March, to really kind of talk about the, the work that they've been doing, to talk about the impact they've been having. Um, and I'd like to bring them to do a presentation.
Um, one last question, I think last year I seen it on social media. One of the groups came in, and then after their program was over, they actually had a parent engagement component where they brought the parents in and was doing some overall family engagement. And so, you know, although we're working on the students, um, are there some opportunities, even with some of these social emotional, um, issues that we're having, that we're actually doing some family engagement to address the whole child? So that parents can become a partner with the school district and ensuring that their students come to school ready every day to learn? Um, and so how, are we having anything in the works? Are we doing anything to support our parents and engaging them, um, wrapping the whole thing?
Couple of things that we are in the works with People Services right now, working on Parent Academy. Uh, Parent University is what we're gonna be calling it. And in that Parent University, we're gonna be looking at how to support parents, uh, giving workshops. giving workshops on parenting, giving workshops on how they can support students in school as well. And I know, I'm not sure if this happened here, but my work with one of the organizations, Iambella, that organization ended up tying in mothers along with the daughters at the end of the school year. Similar to what, so it may have been Iambella, but that is what they actually were, were able to do for us. One of the ideas that I've been playing with, and I'm not sure if I should give it to you here, but I am, I like to do a mother-daughter kind of a workshop, a day-long Saturday workshop. Where we have a variety of different organizations coming in. There, there are three organizations that I've worked with in the past that do a day-long kind of focus on mothers and daughters to, to help some of our young ladies with some decision-making, to help them with focusing on the future college career readiness. Just, and also just kind of working on relationships as well. So that is just kind of a rough idea that I've been working with and is, is looking at some of the organizations that we've been working with in the past and just kind of where we want to, to really start engaging parents as well. We've had a great turnout for our Father's Walk. I know that was a while ago, but I want to figure out a way to engage fathers as well because they, when you ask them, they will show up. And that is what we need to do to make sure that we are, are, are creating those environments. We have a lot of different things coming with people services, where we have a, a winter event that's coming up, where we're engaging families as well. And that's what we intend to continue to do throughout the school year and in the summer as well. Long answer.
No, thank you. I mean, we, that piece is very important. I mean, we have to reach the whole child. If the child has the skills and the parents do not have the skills to continue to support the child, then there's still a deficit and gaps to learning.
Any other questions regarding the tentative agenda? Our next board meeting is here at the board office.
Yes. School is not in session that day. They start their winter break. So we're happy to get up here.
Nineteen?
Yes.
This, this is right around the corner?
Christmas is right around the corner.
Yeah, I know. We go through next Thursday.
We'll be here. Two sixties are still here.
Okay. If there's no other questions regarding Monday's agenda, we'll move on next to the Board of Education Training Update. Do anybody have anything they want to share relative to some things they attended since our last meeting? Madam Chair?
Ms. King? I'm sorry. So the first, I, I've attended two conferences. One was the OSBA Capital Conference, which the majority of us here attended. So the one thing that I want to focus on relative to the OSBA conference was the business meeting where the platform for OSBA legislative platform was set. I brought to the team the two major issues that were on that platform that took us four hours to get through. One was the parent's right to know, which would open the door. We already have policies and laws in place for parents to have the right to know what is happening in the schools. They can always come to the schools. This was a, an attempt to open the floodgates so that parents had the right to know other people's business as well. It also would force, potentially force districts to have to tell parents if students identify outside of their biological gender or, yeah, biological gender. So that, it did not pass. So everything that parents have the right to know now will continue. And again, this legislative platform is what OSBA would advocate on behalf of school districts in Ohio. So if there were something to come out in terms of a parent's right to know, they know the direction that we as school districts want them to, to go and advocate. The other was the use of marijuana by staff and students. That also is a policy that are, that's on everyone's books. What this, inserting this into the platform would allow OSBA to advocate for not allowing, I don't even know how to say it, but opening it up to what staff do outside of their work hours. So it wasn't saying coming to school under the influence. It's, you can't do anything on period if you work for a public school district. It also didn't take into consideration medical marijuana cards and usage. So that was also voted down. What I also want to add is that since the OSBA conference, actually that, that Sunday night, the first night we were there, a group of individuals got together, got together about nine o'clock that evening to really talk about some of these issues and how we could go about advocating for what they call the purple people. I don't know if anybody was there to hear the Teacher of the Year talk. She said, you know, we have to support our public schools. And that's not a red thing. It's not a blue thing. We all need to be purple people and work together for our public schools. And so a bunch of purple people got together that Sunday night. And we were, during the, the actual business meeting, there were emails and texts going back and forth because a lot of those purple people were not delegates. So they were in the back. And so we strategically placed ourselves at the, seated near the microphones because the, the you, they call on the microphone, this microphone, this, the microphone, this microphone. So we spread out so that we could have purple people talking at all the microphones. So our voices could be heard. So we did a lot of strategy that evening and actually during the meeting. Since then, a bunch of purple people have gotten together and we're looking at creating regional consortiums so that we are doing this work throughout the year. And how come the purple people, we don't have any new initiatives or ideas on the platform? Things that are going to improve public education. So the Northeast, we were already, you know, meeting, a few of us were meeting in this immediate area. And they're also doing something similar, similar in Franklin County. So we all came together and we're looking at creating these regional consortiums where we can have these conversations going on regionally and when needed, coming together as a state and doing it more proactively and not waiting till the night before. We're also pushing OSBA to get the platform to us in a timely manner. It says at least thirty days before. And so we're getting it about thirty days before, but that's now allowing the delegates time to come and meet with our boards to see where do our boards, what are their thoughts behind the platform? So we're pushing them to get it to us earlier. We also want to have potentially ideas put on that legislative platform. So that's where we're, we're looking at, at going. Cube Conference. I just want to highlight some things that stood out for me. It was an awesome conference. Makai Ali from Compton. He's dynamic. So some of the things that he talked about was, he said, bold action is the catalyst for change. So I have a lot of like quotes that I wrote down that I want to bring back for us to think about. Bold action is a catalyst for change. He also talked about investing in the curb appeal. So making sure that our schools are looking great outside. We've got some flowers going on because that says a lot about what's happening on the inside. He said, the board's job is accountability and oversight. Empower students to have the voice and choice to be the architect of their education. That also goes hand in hand with another presentation I attended on student voice that I'll get to in a minute. He said, connect and correct before we capture and punish. So connect with our students early. Connect them before we're all of a sudden saying, I got you. So just something to think about. He also talked about using S R dollars, and a couple of people talked about this, using S R dollars for high A P A C T tutoring to decrease learning loss. They also talked about, and I'm not sure if it was Makai or if it was our new Gil Garrett from Detroit. He's going to be the Cube Conference Chair moving forward. Talked about as we, we have to be strategic in making sure that our board is the right board for our district because you do have individuals that want to be on boards, school boards for the wrong reason, for their own agenda. So he even talked about their, I think it was the sheriff, he's a sheriff. They have policies in place for, that have requirements of what a board member has to have in order to apply to be a board member. Ours currently, you have to be eighteen, you have to live in Garfield for like the last six months or something of that nature. He talked about certain levels of training that an individual must show. He said, must complete one hundred level courses. I'm not sure if he meant that at a institution of higher learning or maybe throughout OSBA. That was, I have a question mark. But looking at potentially having policies in place so that we're ensuring people are coming to the table for the right reasons. Another, a new word, we learned a lot of new language that is more inclusive and positive. People are justice impacted. So that talks about individuals that were formerly incarcerated, some of our juveniles that maybe are coming out of juvenile justice system, but saying that they're justice impacted. Reverend Naomi Tutu, Bishop Tutu's daughter was there and spoke. She talked about African proverb and that's how they, they learned lessons. One thing she said is, do not close your ears to those who are doing or speaking differently. Listening to the same voices is what got us here. So, you know, she said, our differences are what makes us strong. Acknowledge who everyone is in the room. So not saying I'm colorblind. No, we all have differences. And that's what makes us unique. That's what makes us strong as a collective body. Uniondale, Union Free School District in Long Island, New York, was the group that talked about student voice. They have a student representative on their board. A junior or senior, and they're able to get A P credits or credit towards civics or stipend. They talked about their superintendent council of middle and high school students. So looking at how we might be able to get our student voices on our, you know, in our district and them having a louder voice. They also talked about the My Brothers Keeper Program, the initiative that President Obama initiated with male mentorship. It sounds like we've got some male mentorship coming into our district. Some other new vocabulary, neurodivergent versus neurotypical instead of saying special needs and typically developing. The other one was neurologically diverse. So, you know, a lot of new words. Heather and I found out that last week was Inclusion, Inclusion Week. So keeping that in mind, for the first week of December, it's always Inclusion Week. Melissa Porter, she is from the Bronx and she was a state representative from the Bronx?
No, I think she was like their superintendent.
The chancellor.
Yeah, their chancellor.
Chancellor of the Bronx, which is like thirty thousand students. Dynamic woman. A great way to close out the conference. She, I, I can't even sum up everything she talked about. Dynamic. I did take some pictures that she had on my camera. I actually changed my, my lock screen. Just dynamic. One thing I will talk about that she discussed was having town halls for parents, town halls for students, town halls for teachers to just get those different voices and opinions. And I think that we are doing a better job of including different voices at the table, some that require. But it was very, very exciting.
Thank you, Ms. King. Anybody else want to share anything from any conferences?
We've been busy this last month.
Good morning. I'll share. I too attended OSBA. Just a few takeaways I had. Like Melissa said, the student board reps, our students becoming more involved in the workings of our district and administration. Some different ideas that were shared at OSBA about student involvement or comments and candy, which are just simple monthly events at the high school level where they can drop a comment, grab a piece of candy. Some different things that they were able to address through comments and candy included food waste and healthy eating, safety in their buildings, and ways to create pride throughout the district. The program has been in some districts for over thirty years. A lot of people used it, well, a lot of students used it as a jumpstart to get involved in board governance. Another session that I attended was by East Cleveland. It was just about the different things they're doing to improve their district and engage their community. They had some really refreshing ideas about their future and direction. I really enjoyed hearing about the research that they did about educational furniture for classrooms. I also attended A C T E, which is the Career, the National Career Tech Conference for C T E for Career Tech Education. So I attended a few sessions, including the first time attendee session, their opening session, session about girls in tech. A really good session about trauma-informed care, career pathways, talent, and health field and actions for preparing students for college and careers. My favorite included the trauma-informed session and the session about girls in coding. Girls Who Code is a free coding program for girls around the world. They can do it online, absolutely free. And the trauma-informed session shared some amazing data and solutions on how to educate students who have experienced trauma and just become their heroes. I was also able to network with a lot of C T E educators from around the world, including meeting the executive director of A C T E. And I also got involved with the D E I efforts of the, the conference. And then lastly, Saturday, I was able to attend the Metro Casby forty-first anniversary celebration dinner on behalf of the district. And it was themed Equity and Excellence in Education is Our Passion. Keynote speaker was the two thousand and twenty-two National Teacher of the Year, Mr. Kirk Russell. He shares some really nice, quick-to-the-point facts with us. He was very pleasant. And our very own Superintendent Dr. Reynolds was recognized for his amazing work in education with equity, with the Superintendent's Award for Equity and Excellence in Education. So it was definitely a pleasure to represent the district that evening. It was my first time attending something from or through Metro Casby. And it was a really, a really good room to be in. So congratulations again. You should show us your award.
Yes. And thank you to them. The organization that we intend to fully engage. So thank you for attending. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Thomas, Ms. Mercer. I'm sorry to put her on the front, but I think we have a girls' coding club here that she runs that in the elementary school.
Biggest group this year, fifty kids.
Hey, which building?
William Foster.
We, we actually have a meeting hopefully scheduled.
This week.
Yep, we have a meeting scheduled to figure out how we can continue to do that and duplicate the program and to do more with, with STEAM. So that is actually something we intend to.
Let's take them to C V C C. Yeah, so it's ironic that Ms. Mercer is here. She's the technology teacher at William Foster. But my daughter Emily, when she was in maybe the fourth or fifth grade, she participate in the girls' coding club that she runs there. So that is something that, there's some things where not even some things, there are a lot of things that people just don't know about that our district is progressive in. And so there's a lot of good work that's happening in our district day to day and it is progressive in alignment with other districts. And some things are, we're ahead of the curve in some things, especially when it comes to technology. When everyone was scrambling one-on-one, we were ahead of that. So we just don't necessarily talk about it or really highlight those things when it comes to technology that we're doing in the district, but
We will.
We're not behind. Don't, don't get it twisted. Don't look at all the things you hear and see there are so many things, hidden treasures that we have in our district that happens every day and, and we're progressive and, and competitive in education in some areas. And especially with that girls' coding program, that's one of those areas that she's been doing it already for a while. And she's our neighbor in the community, so I see her out in the community. And she got some other amazing ideals to expand technology and access to our students in our district. So those are those hidden gems and treasures. Sometimes we go outside looking for folks, but there's a lot of ideals, gems and treasures that's in our district right now that people are sitting on. Ideals and visions for the students because they're, they're students. They know what our students need more than anybody else. They know our students because they see them every day, work with them every day and know what the kids are asking for too. Because they're asking them, are you doing this? So they know what's been working. So yes, just a little club for my neighbor and my kids' teachers.
As a former computer science major, former math teacher and a former principal of a STEM school. That's an area that I really want to, to begin to explore and to really highlight the things that have been happening. So that is why we're gonna be meeting and, and really pushing this to, to our students. And I think that our students will benefit from that and creating partnerships where our students can do some things. And I don't mean to go too deep in, but C N C machining is something that that is an area that our kids could really benefit from. I had students in my school in Charlotte who were highlighted because after graduation, they went into C N C machining, making over seventy thousand houses, nineteen-year-olds. So those are opportunities that I don't think that a lot of school districts have really pursued, but I intend to, to do that.
And getting them interested. So and then we have the pathway, you know, we have C V C C accessible to our students. But I've said this for, who wasn't here, but I've been saying this for years, if we show our students in elementary school what they have available for them as they progress, that will get them excited about it. That will get them in tune to not just doing their assignments in elementary and the importance of it. But they'll actually see a pathway and will possibly commit our parents to being stable in our district because they know that A, if we could just get our kids to the high school, there are so many opportunities, but we need to make sure that those opportunities are there before high school and we're just building, you know, versus the high school just being the, the, the plan. So thank you, Ms. Thomas, and thank you for the work you're already doing with our girls' coding program. Is there any other?
Yes, so I too attended O S B A. I took a lot of sessions with the socio-emotional learning of the students. Took one where they created rooms where the students could go, you know, just to like calm themselves down. I had one where they talked about, they created a P D day for high school students. And so they just took a regular day and made it a P D day and they taught the students different things. They would ask the teachers areas they were experts in, as simple things as how to tie a tie, how to change a tire on a car. So I thought that might be a fun thing to introduce into our high school. The biggest takeaway from O S B A was I sat in a dyslexia area, which is personal to me. My youngest daughter has dyslexia. But there have been new laws put in in Ohio. And so Parma, it was given by Parma City Schools and they talked about how they were proactive knowing the law was changing. So they actually had started training their teachers. It takes a lot of work, but I think that would be a fantastic area to get some of our teachers trained in. And then I also, as Ms. King did, attended Q. I took a lot of sessions on reading and literacy. Because only one in five students are reading on level, of their grade level. So they were really pushing a program called Science of Reading. I have a lot of good notes. There, I mean, it was just fabulous to learn some stuff. Then I also attended a session on D E I because we know that's a huge thing. But this session talked about, we always were, we always focus on diversity and equity. But who really focuses on the inclusion and belonging of our students? So that's what this one had focused on. They talked about a book that I would like to recommend that the board read and have like a book study on. It's called Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity by Floyd Cobb and John Crown Apple. So I'd just like to bring that recommendation that we could do a book study on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Ms. Morrison had sent me the information on that and maybe if we can get those books by our January work session. And then as we go throughout our months, we kind of set up a schedule and during our work sessions during the follow-up three months, we can discuss the topics, one of the books and our takeaways and how we can benefit our students.
Yeah, request an audio book.
That given by the lady that has the, that joyful inclusion?
No, no, wait.
Did that session?
This one was given by the young lady who did the literacy one with when the three people were up there.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, she, she gave that present, this presentation also.
So if no one's opposed to us starting that book study, we can order those books for us to have in January, whatever method you guys require. And, and then we can begin to look at it and set a schedule, begin to discuss. Discuss it. Maybe the professor can outline it for us, Dr. Reynolds. So that was good. I'm looking forward to bringing that. We talked about book studies and kind of when we did some work with with Deborah Keys and so thanks for just initiating that opportunity for us to kind of move forward with that. So that's good stuff. Well, I also attended O S B A. I attended, a few sessions I attended. One by happenstance about attendance. It wasn't on my agenda, but what happened at O S B A was, and we all, I don't know if anybody else experienced it. If you did not get in that room early, they were packed out. And so you were at the last minute having to pivot and finding a different session. So I had a nice little plan, but most of those sessions were, the really good ones were standing room only. And it was, and these were large rooms, so it was just really, you know, unfortunate, but I did one on attendance and it was actually C M S D. And they talked about some of the methods in which they were using to improve student attendance. And it was really relative to personalizing family engagement. Making sure that just not those audio phone calls, but our students that have chronic absenteeism where they're actually really calling the parents and having these discussions and just doing some messaging around that, you know, just not saying, you know, you did not show up, your child did not show up to school today. But just really giving some messaging and finding out why and how they can support those families and unanswered phone calls is not where they stopped. They were aggressively before, knocking on doors before we get to the level. We shouldn't just knock on doors when we're at Truman level. We're not seeing our student, haven't seen our student and not able to reach and have conversations with the families and parents. Those door knockings should not happen when we need to, we should not be aggressive when we are now trying to penalize them. And so they just really talked about really engaging our students and families with chronic absentee or as we just monitoring that pathway where we take the same aggressive stance with getting them to school every day that we do when we have to penalize them for not coming to school for so much time. You know, so when your kids miss so many hours, you start getting all these letters and people knocking on the door and people aggressively trying to reach out to make sure the student is present, but you know, that student that's at five days, you know, two or three days absent, you know, and no illness, just didn't come today. And they come, they come to school and tell you why they didn't come. My mother just didn't feel like sending me today or I didn't want to or you know, some parents with the older children having the issues with parenting and encouraging those students or they're cutting or, you know, things like that. So just really supporting our families and making those personal touches. Not just robotic phone calls when we start to see that trend and being aggressive with our parent engagement. When we want to part, because we wanna partner with our parents and our community, because they talked about just even how many kids out in the community every day and nobody knows, right? You assume they're at school, parents assume they're at school, community assume they're at school and they're actually out and they're unaccounted for and just us having a more aggressive stance and investing. C M S D was able to invest in, you know, that district wide and began to see some improvements with that. One of the, one of the, I always like panels that are directed and ran by other fellow school boards members to give a good perspective. And so I attended one called School Improvement and Turnaround. And it talked about the board level and I think it was Kyle Hoke Heights. Was it Kyle Hoke Heights? No. Kyle Hoke Falls City School District. Cincinnati and it was Columbus City Schools. And they talked about what they were doing on the board level to improve school improvement and turnaround. And really how doing that board level work kind of pushes down the work. And one thing that we've talked about that we really needed, we need to prioritize as a board of education this year and even as we go into our organizational meeting, I think we need to set some regular talk about some regular board retreats. And we really need to develop our belief statement. And we committed to that. I think you had mentioned that before when we were talking about and really some solid board goals. So Columbus City Schools, they have adopted three measurable board goals that the Board of Education is committed to. And they talked about how them as, at the board level having measurable goals that they were committed to and that was governing through, it began to set a culture and establish a culture. And we were doing the same work that we're expecting the district superintendent and everyone else to do. They also talked about just the importance of, Kyle Hoke Falls talked about their community engagement. How they prioritize that and how that's improved student improvement because now they have stakeholder and, and parent and student engagement and commitment. So they're partnering with these various stakeholders and it's not us versus them. And they talked about how they attend, they, they are aware of every single community event. There's a board member that attends every single community event. The board members are identified by, they have district shirts that, that has their name on it and says that they're a board member of that school district. So they're identifiable when they go out in the community, community members know that those are their board members and that they do that work collectively. They don't put it on one person in particular. All the board members, they know the schedule of things that's going in the community and they commit to being present and showing a presence. And accessibility creates a culture that diverts anger. So people have an opportunity to see their board members out in the community, build relationships with the board members. Helps to build a relationship with the Board of Education. And it allows for, instead of people getting angry, to come to the district with conversations about concerns versus complaints about concerns. And that's what we wanna develop a culture of conversation versus a culture of complaints. And it talked about just really, and this is what I would like to do and I thank Ms. King for her work and I would hope that she would consider doing more work with our Legislative Committee as a district. But they really talked about the importance of the board taking a legislative stand and especially and it's aligned with the purple people, especially our urban school districts that they don't have necessarily representation down in the State House. And we don't necessarily, and we're very passive too. So just really starting to take a legislative stand as a school district and we are elected officials and they talked about leveraging politics to impact the district. You know, we wanna keep politics out of it, but we are politicians and really strategically leveraging, you know, our legislative power and policymaking power. And also our relationships as political figures and elected officials to make sure that that is, there's some power behind that. And ensuring that we utilize that power to actually impact our school district and not be passive with our power. So knowing that we have power as elected officials and using that power to make an impact on our school district and not really being passive with it. And that's a lot of work that we can really should and can be doing. And that's a lot of work that we can really should and can be doing within our Legislative Committee um and really strategically um taking a stand because you go enough, your voice will be heard and we can influence um things legislatively to impact our school district and other districts in Ohio. And then I went to the Essentials for Policies twenty twenty-three and I just kind of went over a bunch of stuff that I'm not going to go over here, but I'm going to put my notes on a shared document and I encourage everybody to put your notes on a shared document for us to go back and reflect. Um download the um slides so that the other board members have access to them um so that we can review it in details in our own time. And then you can have an opportunity to ask the other board members that attended those sessions any extra details, but really we do this portion of our board meeting because um we do not just want to go to these meetings to get a bunch of information on paper. We need to actually be moving these, this, this professional development throughout the district and our governance and coming back with ideals that, not just ideals, but action um to improve our district based upon the things we've learned and the things that we've networked and found out that our fellow um districts are doing that is moving in the same direction as us. So um that's why we take this time out to have these discussion, bring the feedback, but we just don't want to bring feedback. We actually want this year to be more committed to actually taking actions. So, did you have anything?
Yeah, actually I do. Um I sat in on a couple of sessions. Uh I sat in on a, briefly sat in on a uh East Cleveland City School Session that Ashley was referencing and um heard a lot of the ideas and a lot of the cool concepts that they have and you know, a lot of things they want to implement within their school district. Um I also had the opportunity to sit in on a social emotional learning session as well. I know Heather talked about that. Um where they just talked about, you know, the basic stuff. Um taking a moralistic approach to education in general instead of just being, you know, traditional classroom learning, which a lot of school districts and just education in general is kind of, you know, evolving into more um action related and um I guess you could say um uh non-lecture based style education. Um and they talked a a lot about that and um I've used that as a segue to get into the uh the community partnerships. Um session that I sat in, which the idea and the goal was to talk about how to develop community partnerships from a board member standpoint, uh superintendent or you know, even a teacher or principal or just uh educational professional in general. Um Columbus City Schools was the uh, they were the 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 presenters. Um and you know, they hosted the session and they talked a lot about uh, you know, basic stuff as far as like, you know, knowing your audience and you know, knowing how to uh basically just kind of like knowing um knowing your audience, knowing your needs instead of just, you know, going out and forming partnerships with people because you might have a friend who does this and just kind of like really understanding the needs of the kids and the students in the district instead of just doing things and wasting resources a lot of times, which is, you know, what was the topic of conversation? Uh where he talked about like, you know, a lot of school districts do waste resources on things that, you know, the students don't need. Um and just kind of, you know, um assessing the district and and really, 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 really understanding what the needs are and, you know, take the time to address them. But they focused and they talked about a lot of the partnerships that they had and one of the things that they were doing were um they partnered with Nation, uh Nationwide Children's Hospital, which is a major, you know, it's a big deal in Columbus. Um you know, Nationwide is a, is a pretty popular children's hospital. And they uh wanted to take a moralistic approach to to education and providing um uh resources for conflict resolution um and, you know, uh the poverty aspect of things for students in their schools. So what they did was, is they had a lot of, they actually had like doctors that would like come into the schools and do like physical examinations as well as like um mental exams, just to kind of gauge the mental health status of the student as well as the physical fitness and, you know, just the physical levels or uh of the students that kind of, I guess, to to uh take a deeper dive and then, you know, provide them with like resources and and helping them. Uh they use the example of, you know, if a student comes to school and they sleep or if they're always hungry, how can you concentrate there? You know, and if you're not eating, it's probably a deeper issue, you know what I'm saying? So just kind of like taking a deeper dive into education, which I thought was a lot to me personally. I mean, it's, you know, that's a task for a lot of, I mean, we think about it and trying to do that for a lot of students, but I mean, the concept of it was pretty cool. Um, you know, so um I think that just the the aspect of the holistic approach to to education in general, I think is something that's that's needed. Um I think that, you know, this day and age with a lot of the things that just the experiences that the 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 kids have nowadays, you know, from social media and the pressure of just being a kid and, you know, being different and, you know, being picked on and just all the things that come along with that or can come along with it, not saying these things after the art district, but I mean, it's just a part of life for kids. So I think that, you know, just kind of taking a deeper dive and examining, examining their life and, you know, just the experience of students. Um, you know, deeper than just a classroom, I think is very important um for educators educators to consider and um, you know, maybe be a little bit more informed on those types of things and um, you know, apply some of the things that they do learn and you do take your time, you know, research those things and apply to your teacher methods.
Thank you. I know at one time we had talked about possibly, because we did, you know, we're Ohio and Cleveland in particular with all these amazing um medical facilities and right here in Garfield Heights, having Miriam, you know, Community Clinic, one of the largest and a few other um um UH has their pediatric, um one of their pediatric clinics. Um their community-based pediatric clinics right up on um transportation. Um and I know at one time we had talked about at some point trying to figure out having some type of clinic within um the district um to support some of those things and just given access. Um because that's a, that's a big deal.
That was one of the uh topics that came out of the focus group when we were um creating the strategic strategic plan is having a a school-based health clinic. So when parents came in in the morning to drop students off, they could get a physical received by the doctor. Um it would also help with our our sports physicals and just, you know, students that aren't feeling well. Um immunizations, that sort of thing. So that was one thing that came out of the um discussion with the strategic plan of who were doing those focus groups.
We've had some conversations with Mary Mar, uh kind of spanning the full gamut. We're talking about mental health and providing opportunities for professional development for some of our professionals around mental health, de-escalation. But we also had conversations about possibly creating those opportunities for clinics on campus. Uh even telemed is how they, believe they call, yes, those opportunities. And I know we've had some challenges with kind of this whole thing actually working, because I know that we've had conversations within the past. Um but I I think this is an opportunity for us to really kind of um get the same going. Uh the, uh one of the pieces that they are looking to do is to do the de-escalation with some of our um IMs and some of our um paraprofessionals as well. So that is something that we've been in discussion. We just need to make sure we do, we are followed for all that.
Yeah, I think um it will benefit them even as an organization in this community, a longstanding organization, really have a stronger presence in the school district in which they have conducted business for years. It's no you, I mean, you just see it in other communities and other school districts where that partnership is extremely strong and we don't have a stronger partnership as we should with something as huge as Cleveland Clinic living in our community. Um and it has been here for a long time. So, yeah, so that's something that we really um should leverage. And I attended, I think, in that co-ass role um when I went to that training. One of the districts actually talked about how having those clinics in the district um impacted attendance. Kid comes to school sick, go see, go to the clinic, get some medicine, enable to go finish on the school for the day, because they were able to dispense medicine in this clinic too. So it was, it it impacted um attendance.
For parents that decide to keep their child home because they have a ten o'clock, you know, doctor's appointment, so I'm just going to keep them home. And you know what? Let's just go to McDonald's and go back home, you know, as opposed to bringing them to school at least for half a day. This would allow them to be able to come to school, have that signed permission slip for them to leave and go to the doctor for a physical, you know, tickle the finger, whatever it may be. And they're not missing, they're only missing a small portion of the school day.
Yeah, even the telehealth, I I have to say I have a couple of providers that do telehealth and I have called the school and they've made a space available for my kids to get on Zoom and I chime in too and we just kind of do the appointment right there and they don't miss school.
The sound of that is, it it just works for kind of what we need as, in in general, when you're talking about education. Because we're, if we're not taking care of kids holistically, then we're going to miss an aspect that that is going to be vital to them being successful. And that's just kind of, when you just look at Maslow and don't want to kind of get into the science of that, but that is one of the areas that we need to take care of first, say, just the physiological pieces. But also just making sure we're doing our best to take care of kids at that level so that they can learn.
And I also think it's something that we could um expand to our staff. Um, you know, you've got the health clinic, the teachers, could potentially teachers and staff could have appointments which will help with, you know, substitutes and also the mental health aspect. Um being able to have a a a space for them to maybe do a telehealth um session or, you know, I had mentioned um before having um our EAP providers on site once a month, once a week so that teachers can have access um to our EAP supports.
Yeah, I went to a training that that was more effective too. They had a hotline where parents, teachers, students, anyone can call if they just needed someone to talk to. I don't know, one of their organizations was managing that hotline that was available just for that mental health um support um no matter what. But the health and and just even, I know we've talked with um Cleveland Clinic and partnership just with the advancement of technology when it comes to medical, even if the low level, most least expensive is, you know, them setting up some telehealth um spaces in our buildings where at least that is accessible to families, you know, that that will probably be a a nice, nice way to start the work. Um, that wouldn't have a huge cost with having a whole, you know, facility, but most physicians now, um even pediatricians are actually seeing the kids on first level um via telehealth before they bring them in just to manage communicable diseases and stuff.
And also take a look at um mobile units. I know some of the um hospitals have the mobile dental, mobile mammograms, mobile everything. So we could, and I know there's a mobile immunization um van in the state of Ohio for my daytime work. So there's a lot of mobile, um we've got the parking lots.
You, Wansfield has a mobile hub or something.
Um and that was a part of my conversation and I asked about that and said, well, it's booked. That's basically what they told me. I was, I was, yeah, yeah, that's pretty much what they told me on that one. I was like, yeah, give me work something out. But um that was actually something that that helped us tremendously, especially for our elementary school kids.
A lot of times parents, I'm guilty, I don't, I don't realize they're sick in the morning, you know, or the symptoms don't show up until after lunch or, you know, just don't realize it. Hustle and bustle in the morning, I don't, I'm not checking fever. You know, but by the time, or they're not feeling sick until by the time they get to moving and then they realize they're not feeling well. And something that's a little westy and the doctor really fast and prescribe whether they're well enough to continue their day or we need to keep them home will be helpful. So, thank you all for actually taking your personal time um to commit to um expanding your training and bringing knowledge back to the district so that we can more effectively govern um the school district. So I just want to thank everybody because um everyone took time away from your families, um even those who traveled outside of the city, you know, um took time away from your regular work, which we know that when we do that, when we come back, there's additional work to do and using our personal time and things of that sort. Um it is commended and appreciated and um we are most definitely seeing the impact um in a number of areas of each of the board members' personal commitment um to the work that we have been committed to do. Um not just by law, but I think all of us have a committed passion to do with special kids in the school district. So thank y'all for taking that time out, bringing that feedback and let's be ready to do some action steps on it. Next item on our agenda was other um items for um discussion. So is there any other matters that anyone have that they would like to discuss this evening?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Ms. King?
Um I want to just bring um back to the forefront as we're moving into our our new year and our organizational meeting um for us to um really, and I've also talked with Dr. Reynolds, really making sure that our board committees reflect and support the district and our strategic plan um in making sure that we all are that, making sure that our board committees, I brought um some information last year about board committees and how um we could um better align our committees to um the strategic plan and the work that we're doing in the district. So I would just ask that um we take a look at that again as we move into our um I keep wanting to say new academic year, our new um calendar year and we set our um we elect our members, our officers and also as we um elect or um appoint individuals for board committees and what those committees would book.
So do everyone still have access to the spreadsheet that we developed last year? And I did have an opportunity to meet with Dr. Reynolds about our current committees and um what his needs are as it relates to what we have and what he feel like we need and maybe you want to just kind of share.
Yeah, one of the areas and and there are a couple of probably discussed, but one I want to make sure we're discussing tonight is um uh safety and security, a committee around safety and security. Are there a lot of initiatives that we put in place to to make sure everyone is is safe in our building, that we can focus on teaching and learning? Um but I wanted to make sure that we create a um a committee focused on just ensuring that all the resources are there, that all the discussions are there and and filled with uh various different stakeholders to be involved in these things, to kind of guide that work. Um so that we can continue to remain as transparent as we uh we've been in the past and and continue along those lines. So I'd love to, for us to to create that sort of uh, that committee.
Um will you be, will it be a um and we, and you and I talked a little bit about it, so we're just looking more of like a um more task forcey?
Yes, yeah. Kind of a field that, yeah, a- as I said, with just ensuring that we are guiding that work in our buildings and within the district. And that we're partnering with the police department as we have, um, been working to do this year. Um, we started out during the summer, we're kind of meeting and, and just having a check-in meetings because we do have an S R O. But just kind of understanding not only the things that we can do kind of within the school district, but some of the things that we could possibly do to help the police force outside of the, uh, of the building as well. But just including them in this partnership, the city as well, uh, but just include them in this task force to ensure that we are, uh, giving the maximum effort to, to ensure safety and security.
Anybody sitting on any committees now that would like to have some feedback? Like, do you feel like it's effective or do you feel like there's more that it could be doing on board governance level? Um, just as we're kind of framing on what we're going in our goals, um, relative to the committees that we have in place now? Or even like with our legislative committee and our finance committee, you guys provided, um, mission statements and stuff like that. Is that going to continue to be the mission and focus of those committees too as we move forward? Any feedback on, or anybody?
I still struggle with, with my committee. Fam, uh, community and family engagement. You know, try to, you know, when I think about reporting back to the board, the report, the committee is to move forward the, the board and our work with the, our, our scholars. And I find myself just reporting what's happening in the community. And I'm not sure how much of an impact that is having on the work that we do. Um, talking about what's happening in the city, they're doing the tree lighting ceremony or things that are happening, happening at, um, uh, city council. So I'm, I, I'm still struggling on finding that right balance within that, um, committee to really have a meaningful and significant impact on the work that we do. It's more of, you know, when I first started, it was more of saying it on camera so that people that were watching were aware. But that's not really what a board committee or liaison should be doing. It should be that bridge or conduit from the committee, in this instance, the committee and, um, the community, community and our families and how that impacts what we're doing at the board and vice versa. And I haven't found that sweet spot. Um, there was no clear, um, job description or not even a committee description when, um, I came on the board in 2020. So I really think it's essential for us to have committee, um, descriptions so that we do know what our, our role is. We look at our, um, the first part of our policies and procedures where it outlines what, um, the board expectations are. It talks about committees, but the committees that we currently have, there's no description or expectation.
We created some descriptions last time. That one there, I think we were going to meet with city council, the liaisons. We talked about that, like y'all are going to have to meet us to talk about what it was going to look like.
I, if you're talking about the spreadsheet that we, that we looked at, that, that had some descriptions on it, but I don't remember. Like, we decided to change the names of some of our committees, but I don't remember adopting descriptions and specific act, action steps for any of the committees.
We do, we put the mission statements for the ones that have mission statements. So the legislative committee has one, the policy committee has a description, which is their, um, their mission statement that they came up with, um, within those committees. And then the OSBA and all those liaisons have some. But if you go back and look at our spreadsheet.
And maybe it's, it's because there's committees and there's liaisons. So the committees are working together to do that, some of that work. But for me, it's just me. Yeah. So I think that's, that, in my opinion, that's what I've experienced in the last two years.
Um, what I will recommend for the family and, um, the family and community liaison, just like we do with the wellness, I think what will be good, and we talked about this before and I don't ever think it went anywhere, where Gina will give you a report to read every week, just like Dale does.
But I don't think.
And it will be.
Go ahead, go finish it.
Well, it should tell us where we're at with our family and community engagement. And that's outside of, I'm just right now talking about outside of the city liaison, just the family and community engagement piece. If we had some way where Gina, just like Dale, could report, provide Ms. King with a report on what we're doing with family and community engagement on the district and how would aligns and information that the board will find important. Do you have somebody to do that work? Um, and maybe that can help with you being able to report to things that will be relative to the board.
I hear you, but what's the difference? What, how am I being useful in that role? In, on the board, when I'm reading a report from someone else, that person didn't report. How am I, um, being, and I'm just using me as an example. How am I impacting and, um, the board or impacting the community and our families if I'm just reading a report from someone else? So how, how is that helping? I mean, it's sharing what's happening in the district, but as a board, I'm just, board member then, I'm just a conduit. I'm not actually doing work that helps move the district forward. Such as great example would be finance committee, um, policy committee, potential, we, we, the, uh, legislative committee, because those are, they're action-based.
But we really don't do the work for real. We just sit and report, we're just really like, so with the policy committee, Sean them do work. And we have some, some feedback. Yes, and so I come and bring, yes, and I bring what you guys thoughts, you know, the board's, you know, position and kind of communicate that back and forth. And even the report from the policy committee, Sean writes, you know, and they present things to us. So, um.
But you've had some input prior to Sean writing the report, you guys have had.
Yeah, but that's a committee. That's, the community as a liaison is just really reporting. So, but I think actually, Ms. King, to be honest with you, and especially with your, um, your desire to be more actionable and just even some things that you've done this year that has been very impactful for the school district. I think you will be an asset on our legislative committee. Um, you wrote, um, you presented, you wrote a resolution for us to adopt. Um, you have brought a number of items, even your role as a delegate. Um, it is very legislatively aligned and you have represented our district well in that. And I, and I don't, I, I would like for you to consider taking a more active role in that because the work that you're doing with, um, even, um, the, um, city liaison, you know, that's that legislative stuff that could go into the legislative committee and some things that you can really do actionable, um, with some information that you gather that's just not reading the report.
So, oh, you clarified some things for me. I did kind of circle that liaisons are really just liaisons, um, that they're just a, a conduit to bring information from others to the board, um, and then committees actually focus on.
Yeah.
More of, more task or, um, task-driven.
Yeah, and if that's where your desire, I think, you know, I, I think, I don't know if anybody, I don't know. At, and we have two board members on, um, any committee who has actually still has some priorities you want to work on. You guys both can be on that legislative committee, but you've already done some great work, actionable work, um, relative to legislative priorities and bringing it to the attention of board and even drafting a resolution and presenting to us that we, um, adopted. So I, that's, that, that'd be a great area for you to begin to align some of your actions and it aligns with your delegate role and even the, um, city liaison. That part can go in the legislative committee versus just reporting out. Cause you can bring what you hear in the city council into your legislative committee meetings and talk about what actions we may need to take as, you know, any actionable items as a district. So that's something to consider. But I really would like, you know, um, if, you know, we had a way to, you know, our community and family engagement liaison can be providing some things to whoever will be the liaison that would align, like, or we may need some more money or some priorities, you know, where the board would have to make some consideration as it relates to family engagement and seeing where those numbers go in that that is one of our strategic priorities. And that, just like Dale's report, um, CDC, you know, that can be provided to Ms. King or whoever is in that role and we report out. And this morning, just reporting out to the public, just for the board too, to know what, where we're at and what they're doing so that we can actually know what work is happening in that area. Because we hear from finance committee and the other committees, um, you know, deals with the other areas. So we're really, that's been the gap. So I agree with Ms. King, um, not having, you know, much to go on with what she gathers. And she does a great job with, um, reporting out, but I'm, I know a lot of it is just finding it on social media and that's not always all that we have going on. So as we're going into our organizational meeting, you know, um, just know that, uh, we'll be talking about, um, dates for our meetings. Uh, we'll be like, electing officers, um, and we will be, um, appointing, um, committees. And so, um, you know, if you, um, are interested or, you know, in something else or, you know, really committed to where you're at, um, we will make sure everybody is aligned to where they're passionate about so that we can, um, be more actionable, um, in ensuring that the work we do , uh, within our committees and our roles and liaisons serving, um, Dr. Reynolds' vision for the school district. Is there any other business today? If there's nothing on our other matters, um, our next item on our agenda is a motion to, um, can I have a motion to enter into executive session as, as of eight thirty-seven P M for the purposes of discussing a personnel matter? It's eight thirty-eight now. So moved. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and seconded by Ms. Thomas. Can we have roll call please?
Yes, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Eisen.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
The Board of Education is entering into an executive session as of eight thirty-eight P M for the pur, purposes of discussing a personnel matter.